Welcome, if you will all join me in starting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
Thank you. Okay, so, starting with minutes, February 22nd, minutes, that was at workshop meeting. Motion to approve. Moved in a second over here. Any edits, questions, issues? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. All right, now we're getting to regular business. Why don't I, you know what, I'm just gonna move things around because I know we have guests here related to one of our items. So why don't we start with the Red Hook Village Pride Parade? You all were handed a proposal. And just to review that. And actually, let me give you all a little bit of background. Mel Corka and I, with the events committee, are working on an events permit application or permit process. And we're not there yet, but the folks from Beck Hook Pride, which will take them a while to get used to saying, had approached us asking about the possibility of doing a parade. And one of the things that we will be, that we hope to implement is a process where the board approves. And certain events are in the mix and they happen, but as new events come up, love the fact that we'll get to, we're getting to a point where we've got quite a few. So we want to make sure that we are doing the right number for the village. But this proposal, so we asked Beck Hook Pride to send us, send us a more formal request, which they have done. And this is in front of us to review, ask questions, and to vote on. So just to go through the overview, I think it's pretty straightforward in that Beck Hook Pride is a new organization as of a year ago. And I know I attended the event last year in Reinbeck and it was really, it was extraordinary. It was just joyful and colorful and a wonderful community event. And the group is looking to expand this year. And they are proposing to have a pride parade here in Red Hook on June 22nd. I have confirmed that there's, I am not aware of any other events happening that day. That does not mean that there will not be other events that day. But high school graduation, for example, is the following week. And they're looking to do the parade in the morning at 10 o'clock. And you've got some of the basics here. And Lieutenant Hildenbrand is aware. I have discussed and reviewed with him. He had a tentative parade route, but I think it makes sense to have some further discussions with Lieutenant and with Beck Hook Pride. But I wanted to, again, bring this forward to the board. And part, one of the things that's on here that I want to raise your attention to is the request to fly a rainbow flag. And been doing some legal reading. And we want to make sure that this is, that in raising the flag, that it is something that we decide, and it would be referred to as government speech, so that we're not creating our flagpole. And just to be clear, the flagpole out front has an American flag and a POW flag. We also have a flagpole here that has the Tree City. And logically, it's the Tree City pole that would, where we would put the rainbow flag. We'd take down the Tree City flag, we'd put up the rainbow flag. We actually have a new Tree City flag that we could put back up when the time is right. But I want to do it consciously, so it's government speech. So we don't create a situation where it becomes a public forum over which we have, we have no control, if you will. If it's a public forum, then it falls under First Amendment and any and everyone can put their flags, for example, on the pole. So don't want to do that, want to make sure that it is something that we are sponsoring as a village government. So with that, I would be happy to make a motion that we accept this proposal for a pride parade in the village of Red Hook on June 22nd. Is there a second?
Can I add one thing about, just about, it says businesses in the village fly a rainbow flag. It's not necessarily just that we would be...
There's somewhere in here, I could swear I read this somewhere.
I'm not saying I think that we definitely should do a resolution for the month, I think that would be great to...
Oh, I read that as requesting the village do that. Well, perhaps I projected onto how nice it would be to have a pride flag.
I mean, I think it would be great if there was a flag, if it's a village-sponsored event and the village were to fly a flag in holding and sponsoring the event. I think that would be wonderful, statement of community.
Yeah, I obviously read this too quickly. Yes, good point. So, well, the normal order of business would be to have a second and then discuss. And then if we want to amend it, no, that's quite all right, I'm trying, I'm doing my best.
Second, yes.
There you go. Okay, so the discussion is, so would you all be okay with amending this by adding that the village would fly a rainbow flag the day of the parade?
Yeah.
Are we doing it, is it connected with the event or is it connected with the month? Do we want to do it for the whole month? Have the flag up for the whole month or do you want it just for the event?
It is, what would you all like to do?
All month. I'm fine with the whole month as well.
I think that would be nice.
Yeah.
If you guys are okay with that, I mean, that's not taking away from the event, right?
I mean, the rest of the, you know, the other 11 months, the Tree City gets it, so. Okay, so amending this to add for the village that we will fly the rainbow flag. I will add that the village will purchase a rainbow flag in the attempt to make this be government speech. And yeah, so we'll add that to the proposal. So we have a motion in a second with an amendment of adding that the village will fly a rainbow flag for the month of June on our pole by the Prince Street door. Any other discussion, questions? We do have the organizers here with us, if you have any other questions? I'm not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. Thank you both for coming. You are obviously welcome to stay, but I wanted to recognize that you're here and appreciate, we know how much work it is to put events together and you're doing multiples of them. And we are excited to have, we look forward to having a pride parade in the village of Red Hook in June.
Thank you, Ms. Mike. We so appreciate you having this at your table and your support has been generous and invaluable and it really touches us deeply. So thank you all for that. And I do, just if I can take two seconds, to just acknowledge that it is a bit of a difficult thing to put up a pride flag on the village pole. There's been a lot of, actually, there was a recent issue in California that a town had just had an issue with doing that. And it was related in that way to, like, well, anybody could put up their flag. And so I really appreciate your sensitivity to managing that in a way that is thoughtful and sort of looking forward into the future. We did really want to encourage businesses to fly pride flags on their storefronts because there is such a unique thing in Red Hook that each person has, each business has a flag pole. And it would be lovely if that was something that came from the village as a request instead of, you know, I certainly, we can go and ask, and certain people would be happy to. But if it was put out as a request just for that day, it would be delightful. So as we walk through town, there would be a sort of a show of support from the businesses. And we certainly hope to support the businesses by having this event to begin with. So I just wanted to provide a small amount of clarification for that and thanks for that thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. Yes, learning, learning all the ways of making sure that we're following the law properly and not...
As it changes.
And recognizing landmines when they are right in front of you.
Yeah.
But thank you, and thank you for, thank you for this opportunity, we appreciate it as well. Wonderful, so that I know businesses taking care of. Now we can go to the village hall cleaning contract.
I am, I am gonna excuse myself.
Of course.
My mom just got back from her hospital, so I'll do this. I thought I'd go.
Absolutely, thank you both for coming.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, so in your packets, so just again, a little bit of background and clarification. We hired, we had an employee who was cleaning village hall every week. And that situation ended. Person got a full-time job. And so we then hired a cleaning service and we did go through a process of contacting several cleaning companies. And we ended up with two proposals and we picked the one that we felt was the best. And it's been about two years. And in that process, we went to every other week. And I will say that every other week has been a little tricky. At some areas, it's not a problem, in other areas, it's not been the greatest. And the, and so we felt it was time to look at our cleaning contract again, and so we did. And we have a, we have a preferred contract. I will add that, well, we have a preferred contract in front of you and it's called Vanguard Cleaning Systems. Vanguard Cleaning Systems also cleans some other businesses. I know they do the Mid Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union across the street. And it's a very professional presentation. Jen, our clerk, has met with them to review everything and take them around the building. They actually came back to clarify some things. And we both feel very comfortable with this proposal. And if you look on page five, the proposal is, so we're currently spending 400 a month for every other, every other week cleaning. And this is 500 a month for every week cleaning. They will be coordinating, they'll pick an evening that they'll come. It may not be on the weekends, I think it won't be on the weekends as I recall.
It could be.
It could be. But I am very comfortable with, and very supportive of this proposal. The current contract we have has a clause where with 30 days' notice, we can cancel that contract. And so I would love to get a motion to hire Vanguard Cleaning Systems to be our village building cleaners. So moved, thank you. Second?
Second.
Any questions?
I just had a couple. In their proposal, there's the sort of special services add-ons. Are we working at doing any of those? And if so, one of my concerns is it says it would happen sort of like on a Friday night or something. And preferably, nobody would walk on the carpets over the weekend. And knowing that we have, specifically, this was designated the second level, which is where the police department is, we have personnel that work on the weekends up there. So is this just for the sort of weekly cleaning or is it also for the special services? And how can we mitigate the stranding of that?
Great question. So this particular proposal is just for the regular ongoing cleaning service. The extra services, what I'd like to do is, because there are several of them that we would like to do. Well, you know what? I am quite sure that we have room in the budget, I just haven't gone through it in that level of detail. So what I'd like to do is to come back probably at the April meeting with a proposal for the special services once I've confirmed what money we have in the budget available. But as it relates to the carpet, that has been a discussion. And the, there's possibly, there's possibly a solution of, for example, having the police department, the police officers on the weekend use the back stairs, for example, and then go out that way. So there'd be just a little bit of the carpet that they'd walk on. The other would be possibly using booties or both. But that hasn't, really hasn't been discussed with the police department, so. But yes, and frankly, they could clean kind of everything else. Or certainly the first floor and the courtroom. So would like, just like a little time to coordinate all that. But yes, there are definitely several of these that we would like to do at the building. They even, they do, they do window cleaning too, is that in here?
Yeah.
Which, there are a couple of areas in the building that need to be power washed, particularly around, like underneath or over top of the Prince Street entrance. There's, it's just north side, doesn't get a lot of sun, so there's some mold buildup back there. So I want to wait until after the highway department can do that power washing to clean it in a way that doesn't take up, take off any of the stucco. And then do the window cleaning after that. But yes, so this, this particular vote is just to change the basic cleaning service. And then these special services, I will come back to you when I have, when I have a budget amendment to go with it. Any other questions or comments?
The terms mention that the cleaning itself is provided by an independently-owned franchisee. Did they talk about the relationship between the party that we're executing the contract with and the franchisee who actually will be performing the work?
So I believe Vanguard, and I believe Vanguard Cleaning Systems is, it's a little like a Dunkin' Donuts. I mean Dunkin' Donuts owns Dunkin' Donuts, but then they lease out that name to a franchisee. So I think it's similar in that we are dealing with the people who will be doing the work. And just the name and some of the sort of backroom stuff is done by the national company. Am I correct in that?
I was, I was assured that if you call the number, you, I met with a gentleman, I forget his name, what is it?
Nick?
Nick, yes. He assured me that if we have any problems at all, if we need to call for any concerns, his mother answers the phone. It's a family-owned business. He also, I brought up the concern that it is a village hall and a police station with sensitive information. And he agreed that whoever we would have assigned people and those people would be background checked. So I hope that, does that answer your question, Steve?
Yeah, I think so. Just a little bit, you know, kind of removed from the people actually providing the service, because that was the only...
Yeah, actually, I think, I think that impression is not the correct impression. I think we will be in direct contact with the people who are doing the service.
Yeah, just looking at the terms and that was the only thing which I can...
Right. Which terms are you looking at, the second one?
I just sort of interpreted it as Vanguard sort of like as a like umbrella parent, but the one, like the person who, Nick, I guess.
Nick is the independent owner, yeah.
Is the local contact.
Yes, I think that's the correct interpretation.
It's the correct interpretation.
Yeah, they own the franchise and that's who we're dealing with. Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. I will, I will send out a notice of cancellation to our current company tomorrow. Okay, generator service contract, Allstate Power Systems. This is, we have three generators, two, actually, one for the water plant, one for the village hall, and one for the wastewater treatment plant. Allstate Power Systems does preventative maintenance. And this is a regular contract where they come and check and make sure that everything is the way it's supposed to be. If there's work that needs to be performed or problems or what have you, this does not include that. But this is, this is the same price as last year. So I need a motion to authorize me to sign this contract.
So moved?
Thank you. Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Red Hook Central School District SRO contract. This contract, first of all, apologies all around for it being... You did, I just don't have things in the right order. No, it's in here.
I know I have it.
No, I do. I didn't go through and organize everything beforehand. It's probably very lost here, let's see, I told you. So this is a renewal of the contract that we did last year. As I say, this is later than it should be, but can't go back in time. Literally the only difference from the, so they are contracting for the two SROs that we provide them and pricing for any additional services that they request. For example, if there's a basketball game and they ask for security police presence, we provide that. And so the only difference is, it's literally a two and a half percent increase from the last contract. And that's based on the contracted increase for the, for the police officers. It was a two and a half percent increase, and so that's the increase that's here. So I do need an authorization from the board to sign this contract. I can have that motion. We'll take one, one moving and one seconding. Any questions, concerns, issues? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Subject tank. Okay, you, some of you may remember that we did this last year. This is, we need to go out to bid for our septic tank and grease trap pumping. We hire a company to come and pump out the grease traps and the septic tanks and to haul it away. And we did this a year ago, we did it through the end of May. And so we now need to go through this process again. We did it for just over a year because it was new to everyone. And so now we've got a year under our belt. Doesn't mean that we fully know all that we, what it's going to be like on an ongoing basis, but we're getting, we're getting there. And so this is, what I need is an approval to go out for bid for this renewal. And the biggest difference is that we're going to be looking for a three-year contract instead of doing this every, every year. And so I think I just need an authorization to go out to bid. Or a motion to approve going out to bid.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, I think Steve came in first. Any questions, concerns?
The only question I have is like, do we, in the, I guess, third paragraph, in giving examples of prohibited items, it says excessive fat, oil, and grease. Does that have to be defined at any point to the bidder for them to know the threshold of excessive versus normal?
I don't... Oh, this I believe is to let, notify the village. I think what we're counting on is that any hauler, any pumping company, this is what they do. And so really, they would sort of have a sense of, I will say also, that our, our highway department, at some point I'll get used to calling them Department of Public Works, are usually with them. So it's, it ends up being a conversation and then we can ask them to write it down when it's...
Because, you know, obviously, like, finding wipes and diapers are, is a very like obvious, like, oh, it's there, we know. But like, if it's somebody who's not used to a step system or something like that and if there needed to be some sort of like definition more concretely, but...
You know, I think the expectation is this is what they do. And thus, in some ways, they would be the ones to tell us that it's excessive. Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, the next item, I'm gonna toss over to Steve. So the VFW Post 7765 presented a capital plan proposal and Steve was in attendance.
So on March 5th, which was, I guess, last week, I went to the VFW and they presented their five-year capital plan and campaign. And kind of the overarching goal is to ensure the long-term viability and sustainability of the post. They are in a facility, you know, on Elizabeth Street, I'm sure everyone's passed by it, that's in an older building. And they also face some of the challenges in addition to maintaining the building that any kind of fraternal type, service-type organization has, both in terms of aging membership and making sure that they're able to continue serving, you know, the veterans of the Red Hook community as well as all of the other things they do in the Red Hook community. So the plan is really geared at trying to provide for that long-term sustainability. And it was really a very impressive presentation. They talked about their business plan that they obviously thought through about being able to use their facilities to generate revenue which would help them in this goal towards, you know, making it long-term sustainable and kind of a turnkey organization. So when the current leadership, you know, ages out and new folks come in, they'll inherit something which will be financially stable and viable. And, you know, as many people are aware, they do a lot of service things in the community beyond, you know, their primary veteran service. They do a lot of work with the Red Hook Central Schools in terms of everything from having the golf team practice in their golf simulators, which we'll talk about in a second. They have pretty significant sponsorship commitment for the eighth grade class for the Washington DC annual trip. They have different contests for students to write essays and also provide some scholarship-type funds for students who are choosing either the military academies or military services there around after school. They do a lot of parades and a lot of other things in the village. And, you know, I think they've been a good partner with the village and they were very complimentary of the mayor and all the work you've done working with them. And they're looking to embark upon this five-year campaign and at the same time broaden their relationship with other institutions and entities within Red Hook as well. That's what they, you know, view as being critical for their long-term commitment. And I apologize, I probably should have sent this out sooner. I will scan and send out the presentation that they went through at the meeting. But essentially, they're looking for raising a million and a half dollars over five years. And I'll just quickly go through the line items to get a sense of what they're doing. The most expensive item on there is a new kitchen and along with that, the electrical and propane systems. And the kitchen does a couple of things for them. One, it supports the catering facilities that they have, which people use pretty widely for all kinds of events. Birthday parties, weddings, showers, different things. And it's actually a lovely facility, that's where we had met. So given that food is always, or almost always involved with that, that's really, you know, an important part, kind of the heart of the VFW post. And it's also what serves their cafe, so they have drinks available and food. I didn't sample any, but the chicken wings looked and smelled fantastic. And interestingly, they kind of number people, contact them about using a kitchen as a commercial contract kitchen. And I know from other things, it's actually a huge business opportunity. So it could be either caterers who need to have a commercial kitchen, it could be... It could be more artisanal food producers, you know, who don't have the wherewithal and the volume for their own, but they produce, might be baking, you know, once a month or twice a month. So they believe, you know, based upon some research they've done, as well as people contacting them, that there's a very significant business opportunity for that here in Red Hook. The next item on the list, and it's just in the order they presented it, upgrading golf simulators for $30,000. They have on the top floor of the VFW three golf simulators, which are basically computerized screens that can look like any number of different golf courses around the world. And people who are golfers either do training or in the cold winter months go up there. And there's actually leagues who play there and hit golf balls into kind of a screen, but it looks like you're hitting it down the fairway at Pebble Beach or some other golf course. So this is just upgrading the equipment there. And again, they get quite a bit of income from that. And with more recent equipment, they believe they can expand upon them pretty significantly. The next item is $128,000 to rebuild a parking lot. So the parking lot is in pretty rough shape that... We have a lot of parking lots in our climate, you know, if they've been without major repair or rebuild, end up getting potholes and, you know, kind of provides a little bit of an obstacle course getting in. The day of the meeting was raining, and, you know, could certainly see that firsthand. In providing all these upgrades within the building, it doesn't make sense if the building envelope isn't sound. So they have $240,000 for a new roof, chimney siding, and possibly insulation as well. Again, protecting the investment and just making sure the building is in good shape for years to come. They want to endow two of the things that I mentioned earlier with the Red Hook Central School District. So they fund this Washington DC trip. They want to set aside or include $50,000 as a fund to provide some long-term stability and viability for that. And the same for a student military scholarship fund, another $50,000 for that. So, you know, basically annuitizing the cash flow to provide for the ongoing costs, you know, for that. One of the things that they want to do, which, you know, seems somewhat ambitious, but it's acquiring the property adjacent to them on Fisk Street. So this is $300,000. And their rationale for that is a few things. One, it would address, you know, the parking situation, which in addition to needing to be resurfaced, and I certainly saw that the night I was there, when they had a golf league this meeting and some other things going on, it's frequently not sufficient for the volume of folks who show up. So having that adjacent property would help them with their parking. It would also provide some more office space. They didn't talk about whether it was for their own office needs or rental office. And obviously, it would depend upon whatever the zoning is, how they could use that. But they believe that there's, you know, a benefit to owning that adjacent property. One of the things they would also like to do that... Again, I don't know about the need for that, although it certainly makes sense on the surface, is retrofitting it, and by the VFW building, as a community relief center. So that would involve upgrading heating and air conditioning, as well as providing a generator. So it could be a cooling and shelter situation if people lose power or some other reason. You know, there's kind of a large-scale event where people need to seek alternative shelter outside of their home. I know that high school provides that. But that's one of the things they would like to be able to do.
The community center also does.
Yeah, I mean, there's other places, but they feel based upon their research there's need for additional facilities like that. And the last item for $52,000 is a contingency for, you know, escalations and other unanticipated expenses for all of the above. So that's where the million and a half comes from. And they have a number of different ideas as far as fundraising, grants being one of them. And they have a grant writer who they're working with, someone from a small firm out of New Paltz. And they're identifying grants which they would be eligible. A lot of those grants are, you know, federal government grants. Because the VFW, although they're kind of private organizations, there's some kind of a loose federal... I'm not sure if charter is the right word, but...
They are under the umbrella of a federal organization, which is the National VFW.
So they also have a whole variety of, you know, the typical fundraising things people would do in such campaigns. And they want to engage as broadly as they can with the community. You know, the village certainly being one of those entities that they would like to work with. And, you know, I kind of stepped up, said I would kind of work with them and help them with that, you know, kind of in my role here as a village member. I'll talk with the mayor about kind of what we can and can't do, but, you know. As part of, you know, moving forward, yeah, I'd like to make a motion for the village to... And the mayor providing a letter of support for this capital campaign.
I believe the letter of support they're currently looking for, it's related to a grant. Often with grant applications, it always is helpful to have letters of support from a variety of sources. And so we have been asked to write a letter of support for a grant application that they are currently working on. I think it's specifically related to the kitchen, but I, to be honest, I didn't look at it today.
I believe that's correct.
But I... That it... I just, I would love to have the support of the board to say that on behalf of the village board that we are supporting this proposal. I can say about the kitchen, to be a commercial kitchen level... I know this through Red Hook Responds, because they're required to use a commercial kitchen. The Elks Club has a commercial-rated kitchen. The Fire Company does. I believe that's it, in terms of available kitchens that you can use. So it gets hard because everybody wants it at the same time. So that's the hard part. But I think they are correct in saying that they... That having a fully, a full commercial kitchen, there are certainly opportunities for that.
Can I ask, what was the budget for that?
For the kitchen?
Yeah.
That was $500,000.
Okay, thank you.
And again, it's based on plans drawn up by Delaware Engineering. So they... Although it's not kind of plans to build from, it's a conceptual plan. They kind of scheduled out the equipment, the electrical work, structural work, ventilation system, and all of the things you would need, you know, including refrigeration. So it's probably a pretty good number, based upon working with Delaware Engineering to come up with that.
Do they talk more about acquiring the lot adjacent to them? Because all of the lots around them are residential. So I'm curious which lot that they are...
I don't recall the number, but they said they... The owner had actually approached them. So they've had some conversation, you know, with the current property owner. But I don't think that's kind of their initial priority, but that's one of the things, you know, during the five years they would like to explore.
Steve, you mentioned they also plan to completely redo the parking lot for the building. Do you know if that's just, you know, replacing fresh new blacktop where the old blacktop is? Or if there's any aspect, or they're looking into reducing the amount of impervious surface?
It's a good question. They didn't talk about the specifics, but it does, you know, encompass, you know... And I don't think it's a... Kind of looking at it, I'm far from an expert on that. It doesn't really look salvageable with patching. So, and they did have a couple of estimates that they received. It involves, you know, essentially repaving, restriping, you know, and putting in a brand-new parking lot. But providing, you know, input about having, you know, permeable surface, parking material makes a lot of sense.
I have a piece that I would add. And this is the opportunity with knowing that this is a project that they're working on is perhaps we can add some thought or commentary. The wanting to make sure that the drainage is not just draining into the pond, but actually they're... They've got a plan for making sure that the runoff is taken care of. Whether that's... I'm not sure what the answer to that is, but that would be part of the... Part of something. But, yeah, I mean, certainly information around pervious materials, or at least maybe adding some greenage in some spots.
Well, and I think that also...
Wouldn't be a terrible idea.
I was going to say, I think that also adds well to the fact that we have just decided to continue our forces into a climate-smart community. And so looking at a large part of property that is, at this point, asphalt, but having something that's a little bit more climate-friendly would be a good opportunity for us to express our interest in as well.
Great. So may I have a motion to write on your behalf this letter of support for the grant application? For the kitchen?
Yes.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I was wondering, so the... I know that the firehouse has, you know, an event hall, and they have a commercial kitchen. Do we have any... Do we know how often that is in demand? Because it's a similar setup to the VFW. And they, it's a very new thing. I don't know how often their event space is used.
I don't.
I mean, as far as the VFW, I mean, I think they talked about, you know, the kind of organic use, because they do have quite a few events in their own catering hall. How often that is, I couldn't tell you. But they also look at that as part of their business plan to have cash flow from that. And, you know, I think having a number of food producers come to them asking if they had this type of facility, you know, I suspect they would capitalize on opportunities that have come their way, as well as marketing it probably a little bit more than perhaps some of the other similar facilities in Red Hook do.
Well, I'm wondering too if, because I know like some of their community events that they put on, like the Easter egg hunt, and they do like a hot chocolate thing when the weather gets cold and things like that. They do provide food for all of the community members that come and attend these events. So it would be my hope that part of retrofitting and expanding the kitchen would allow for more... For them to continue to use that space in a similar way that helps everybody in the community and not just people specifically with the VFW.
No, that's what they talked about, is making it that kind of community resource for all of the things they do, where food is provided. And, you know, although you need to meet, you know, certain specific veteran requirements to be a VFW member, anybody can attend events there, anybody can rent their hall. So, you know, it's as open, you know, as it can be, although membership is fairly limited.
I'll add to the letter, an emphasis on the importance of those community events. I think that's a good thing to emphasize. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Thank you, Steve. All right, the next item is not a new item. You've seen this before, but... So for the sewer project, one of our funders is the federal government through the USDA Rural Development. That's what the RD stands for. And because we have adjusted the line items, we've not adjusted the total number, but because we have adjusted the line items, the Form E that you all approved last... At our last meeting, USDA requires it to be more specific. So you have a resolution that has each line item and how it has changed, decreasing and where the money comes from. So decreasing contingency and increasing Medicaid and MAC, which is local council, with the old budget and the new budget. And it has every single line item there. And that is by their request. So this is a resolution. Again, stating that the sewer project is... Construction is complete, and contract numbers are being finalized. Total project cost does not exceed the approved amount. However, there are adjustments within the line items. So now therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees approve the following adjustments be made, as reflected in the modified budget revised Form E dated 2/21/24. And then it goes on to decrease contingency, increase Medicaid and MAC, increase contingency, decrease Roden, Hausen, Schale, and Polidoro, et cetera. So I would like a motion to approve this resolution, which is Resolution Number 7.
So moved?
Thank you. Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions? Concerns, edits, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And along the same lines, I have two further... These are just motions to authorize... So we have two contracts, two contracts in question. One is for Michelle Zaborski, who is our village comptroller. She has a... There was, there's a line item in the budget for $12,000. She has a contract that was... That she provided to the prior mayor in 2017. However, the USDA RD has noted that the village has not signed this contract. I will also say that in conversation with Michelle, she will be charging us $5,000. And I have her invoice from that. But what I would like is a motion... And I did not give you a copy of this contract. It literally says, "My firm will review and process invoices and paperwork regarding required for recording and payment processing to EFC and USDA for the Red Hook Sewer Project. Data will be consolidated from CT mail approvals, invoices from contractors and other parties, and converted to required forms and spreadsheets and transmitted to the village, EFC, and USDA. Work is on an hourly basis of $35 an hour, which will be detailed on invoices. Fee for accounting services will not exceed $12,000." And the biggest difference is, once it switched from EFC to USDA, I actually did that work. But I would like a motion to authorize me to sign this contract. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I have one more request. We have a contract with financial advisors. They are providing support in the joy of municipal financing. And this is a contract that was authorized and signed in 2021 by the prior mayor, prior board. However, there is not a... There is not a not-to-exceed number on the contract, which has been requested by USDA RD. I have confirmed with... Beth Ferguson is the person we deal with at Financial Advisors, that she is more than willing to sign an amendment that says not to exceed the $17,000 that is in the modified Form E. So I'm just asking for a motion to authorize me to also sign that addendum that the financial advisor's contract will not exceed $17,000.
So moved?
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions?
And that's just for the... This loan for the sewer project, correct?
It's just related to the sewer project, and the $17,000 is the number that's in the modified budget that you all approved, actually, at the last meeting. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. No guarantees, we won't have more to do on that.
Do you have the date when the contract was signed, or...
I know it's 2021. The actual date, I'd have to look up. Okay, the next thing is a budget resolution, budget adjustments. Oh, well, let's do budget adjustments. Oh, well, let's do budget adjustments first. This will be resolution number eight. So this is a whole variety of budget adjustments. I will say that the very first one on real property tax, I'm going to take, I'm going to take that out, which means that we have, the difference is, there'll be a net positive at the bottom of $1,214.06, which I'm going to leave there for now. I'll bring back another, I'll have another budget adjustment at the next, at the April meeting. Because I, we have, what's on the revised budget is what we have received in, but there's no reason why we shouldn't have gotten the whole thing. So I need to figure out what the difference is and why. So I'll come back to you on that one. But the other one are adjusting for actuals, others just knowing what's coming in. So for example, the grants from local governments, we received a Tree City grant for $1,000. CHIPS aid, that's the actual amount we applied for, and you'll see in the expense line, the number, it went up the equivalent amount. The engineering contract under expenses, that's the traffic study that's paid for by ARPA funding. We had some extra plumbing repairs in the building, et cetera. So that's, any questions on the general fund piece? So if you go onto the next page, you have for the water fund. Again, several of these are getting, they're just adjusting to what, what the actuals are moving towards, for example, the water tapping fee. We have, we have received $12,000, so we need to increase that budget. The other compensation for loss, that is, it was a contractor who broke our water line, and so that was the payment back to the village for the cost of repair. And the water tapping, we, it costs more than what we had budgeted, so that's an increase there. Central Hudson is hard to get a handle on, what it's actually going to be, but it's definitely going to be higher than what we had. Water purification, that's something I need to do, there's a payment in there from a year ago, which is one element that's making it higher. I do need to do a little bit more research on that, but the reality is, is that's what we're spending. And, and then under other income, just so that, that's the WIA grant, and this is increasing the bond anticipation note to cover the costs that we have currently listed in our budget. So it looks like it's not coming out evenly, but it is actually making the budget work on the, under the WIA grant. Any questions on the water fund? Hearing none, moving on to the sewer fund. That's, so the biggest one is the ARPA, the ARPA funds that's paying for the, paying for the, ooh, it's, it's in there, that's the one that's paying for the wastewater treatment plant capacities increase study, which we already changed the budget for, I think. I hope so. I think so, didn't have done too many numbers in the last few days. Oh, no, there it is, that's, sorry. The sanitary sewers desk engineering, that $15,000 is covered by ARPA. We agreed, I think it was in December, to have ARPA pay for that. And again, the electrical costs are higher than budgeted for, for the sewer. Again, the invoices seem to be a little bit all over the map, so need to understand what that's going to be going forward. And probably need to do a deeper dive into our central Hudson bills. But that's, so this is the budget adjustment to get us closer to, closer to actual, as best we know at the moment. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved?
Thank you, Steve, second?
Second.
Ms. Charlie, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, that leads to, this will not be a lengthy conversation, but I did want to present you with a preliminary budget for our three funds. That, that came in today, I finished it today, so I'm sure you have not had a chance to look at all the numbers. Thank you to Jen, you should all thank Jen, and your eyes should thank Jen for printing out the general fund in larger papers so you all can read it. I have my little mini print here. Top line for general fund, so the tax cap, for us to be within the tax cap, it's actually for real, real property tax, it is an increase of 2.3%. In the expenses, I have assumed a 2% pay increase. We are in negotiations now with both unions, also in negotiation with the fire company. So I did put some dollars into contingency, I do not have an indication of what, what numbers we're looking at. So it seemed logical that there will be an appropriately an increase, and so I put that in at 2%. I have kept planning at $25,000, because I know that we will continue to have some planning needs going forward. If you look at the total revenue and total expenses, both of them are down primarily due to the garbage truck. So we had, we had bond revenue in, the $218,000 to pay for the garbage truck, and then of course we had the expense of paying for it. So both those things are not in next year's budget. And the other is CHIPS this year is at the $134,000 mark. We will not have that much CHIPS funding available to spend, so that number is at 30, at $50,000 in the budget. But that number, again, whatever's in the revenue is in the expense, those two match. But that's why the total revenue number and the total expense number is down from this year. And then the last thing I want to point out is, what I'm also proposing in this budget is to consider adding a part-time person to the police department. Currently, Lara Hart is split between the police department and the building department. And the building department just has, it's just been busier and busier, and it seems, and of course the police department has more and more paperwork administrative things to do. And so if we can find the right person to help do some of the basic admin paperwork things that are required in a police department, that should, in theory, free up time for the lieutenant and other police officers to focus on what it is that they do best. And so that is something that I'm proposing, and so we can discuss it, we can discuss it now. We're not approving a budget, this is for me to give this to you, for you to look at, to have further discussion. The other thing that I will share is, my good friend, Mr. Campbell is not, Campbell is not here, from the Daily Freeman, asked me what that does to the tax rate, which I now have that information. But the assessed value of, the property assessment value of the village has gone up almost 14%. And so with a real property tax increase of just 2.3, that means that the tax rate goes down. So currently our tax rate is 5.68 per thousand, and this proposed budget would move the tax rate down to 5.11. That's 5.11 per thousand, is what that looks like. Again, this is just for me to present this to you. Do you have any questions at this moment, recognizing you will have other opportunities? I'll take that as none, that is totally okay. I realize I've been living in the, breathing these numbers for a while, so this gives you all a chance. And feel free to reach out if you have a specific question. My notion would be to have our March workshop be budget workshop, where we really go over these, I've, I've asked for confirmation from the county, for example, on whether or not I'm close on the sales tax estimate, and just to see if there are any other areas that need to, need some adjustment. For example, I will be adding $500 for the, for a climate smart committee, but there's some flexibility within the budget, I just need to identify that and put that as a line. So, yeah, so if you have questions or want to go through it in detail with me, please, please reach out, be very happy to go through the details. Water fund, top line on water fund, there is no change to the water rates. Still working out what we expect our final meter water sales to be. But that's, I know the, our water department, which is primarily Jen, has been doing a really tremendous job of making sure that we are appropriately billing everyone for the water that they're using. And let's see, so the water tapping fee, for example, I don't expect it to be as high, that, that ends up being about two water taps. Don't know that we'll have those, but seemed logical to assume at least one or two. And then just, there really isn't anything else that stands out. The 2% increase for anywhere there's a salary is included in here. We have contracts with, we have, we have contracts with Delaware Engineering and also with C3ND. C3ND would be the operator, Delaware Engineering is our engineer. And I know the C3ND contracts are also in discussion. And other than that, it's, it's very similar to this year's water budget. Any immediate questions on the water budget? And then so lastly, the sewer budget. What I've done for the sewer budget, which is slightly different than, than the report that Lori will be sharing, is I put the capital revenue and the capital expense on the second page. So I have separated out, total revenue does not include the capital fees that we receive, because the capital fees need to go to paying capital, and so it is a separate thing, which is why I did that, for the budget purpose. And again, assumed similar to, similar to this year. And there really isn't anything, the biggest change is on the sanitary sewer per serve, which is basically payroll. That's for the highway department, tend to be named Department of Public Works. I am assuming that we will need more help there, and we've added an entirely new service. And so I'm not sure what number to put there, but I know we're going to need more, more support for the sewer department, so I put that there. Otherwise, it's very similar, there is not the engineering project, and otherwise that's pretty much it. And then if you look on the second page, we have the sewer charges, the capital fees coming in. I will say for the capital fees and the O and M fees, we are in the process of looking at that, looking at reviewing the whole setup and the changes in use, and reallocating, reallocating those charges, but we, we are not done with that yet, so it's not the right time to make any changes here. For this year, the principal, because we are not yet in long-term financing, the $80,000 in principal is what we are paying, that is a payment due to the USDA, and the interest is what we are, what I expect we will pay to USDA. The plan is we are going to long-term financing with EFC, which is the Environmental Facilities Corporation, that's state, that is zero interest. So once we make that switch to the 30-year long-term loan, it's roughly the $211,000 per year is what, is what we're expecting. What I am expecting, we will be paying in principal. That's the 6.3 divided by 30 is where that comes from. It'll, it'll be adjusted slightly when we're, when we have the final numbers. But that's it for the, for the sewer. So again, take a look, we'll, we'll look at it in, in as much gory detail as you would like in our workshop meeting. But I do need to make a motion to have a public hearing for our budget at our April 8th meeting. May I have a motion for that?
So moved?
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you. This is literally just to set the public hearing for the budget, which we are required to do. We're required to do that in April, because we need to pass the budget by the end of April. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. That's it that I had to do today, right? Okay. So just confirming that our next workshop is March 28th, and that'll be all about the budget. And then we'll have the public hearing on, on April 8th. Okay, with that, moving on to department and committee reports. And now to call on our fine treasurer to come tell us about our finances.
Good evening, everybody. Here is the treasurer's report for today, March 11th, 2024. The account balances in our funds are as February 29th. General fund, $698,996.88. The water fund has $535,081.18. Payroll clearing account, $37,531.94. Sewer fund, $93,097.82. Hard Scrabble fund, $3,443.68. The village green has $8,532.88. Health insurance fund, $11,745.74. And petty cash holding steady at $52.93. Our reserve checking balances are as follows. Fire department, $7,679.38. Police, $17,440.57. Highway, $29,294.62. The snow reserve has $3,351.16. Tower reserve, $18,098.57. Unemployment, $7,178.98. The court reserve has $3,370.70. And the office reserve has $993.77. And finally, our monthly expenses for February were general fund, $354,013.95. That is higher than typical, because we paid for the $218,000 garbage relief truck. So those look high, that is the reason why. Water fund is $94,883.49. Payroll clearing account, $3,401.42. And the sewer fund with $41,232.87 in expenses.
Super. Motion to accept the financial report?
So moved?
Thank you, second? Thank you, any questions? Thank you very much, appreciate, appreciate all the efforts.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Made an assumption. Okay, my turn. So, starting with the police reports, for the month of February, there were 288 incidents, 163 in the village of Red Hook, 113 in the town of Red Hook, and 12 in the village of Tivoli. There were 105 water tower security checks. Uniform traffic tickets, there were 80, 52 in the village of Red Hook, 22 in the town of Red Hook, and 6 in the village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were 6 in the village of Red Hook, none in the town of Red Hook, and 1 in the village of Tivoli. and 1 in the Village of Tivoli. There were 7 arrests, 2 in the Village of Redhook, 3 in the Town of Redhook, and 2 in the Village of Tivoli. Fire reports. These just came in, so you do not have copies. But I will share those with you. What I have is January report. And there were a total of 36 incidents in the month of January in the village. 30 of those were the 300 types of the EMS call, rescue, medical assist. 3 of them were in the 700s, which were alarms, a lot of smoke alarm, et cetera. There were 2 in the 500 category, which is assist individual, service call, person in distress. And then 1 600, which was either a smoke scare, hazmat release investigation, good intent call, that sort of category. Outside the village, there were 57 total incidents. 32 were EMS type calls. 15 were the alarm type calls. 3 were actual fires, fire building, fire cooking fire. There was a car fire. 2 are in the 400s, which are hazardous condition or a power on down, that sort of thing. 3 in the 500s, which is assisting person in distress. And then 2 in the 600s, which were the good intent calls, smoke scare type of thing. So interestingly, that about half, and this is for one month, but about half of the EMS type calls were in the village and half in the town. About 83% of the alarms were in the town, and 100% of the fires were in the town. Just thought it was interesting to see the difference of those items. For the sewer project, I don't have any, I don't really have any updates. You've seen the requests for being very precise from USDA. And so we are proceeding in pace to get them what they need to move us forward. And then, so the Redhook Public Library. I did attend the February meeting, which was held on February 15th. There were 2 other attendees or guests in addition to myself. Barry Ramage and Rick Swerup from the Mid-Hudson Library System were there. And Barry introduced himself as a representative from the Mid-Hudson Library System. There are, the Mid-Hudson Library System, actually, maybe I say it in here. They try to visit each library in the system once a year to observe and discern what the needs are and how they can better represent. Barry was actually the president of the Redhook Public Library many years ago. And the current president, Donald Shea, was on the board then. And he noted that the board looked very different than when he was there. A lot of board turnover. He invited all to Mid-Hudson for training and to remember that they are a resource for the board. Rick spoke about board training from the Mid-Hudson Library System. He did say they were known throughout the states, having strong training programs and the quality of their executive director. He mentioned Advocacy Day was the week before, where the need for better library funding was advocated for. He explained that it's library boards that elect the Mid-Hudson representatives. There are 3 representatives from each county, and it's 5 counties. And that they are here to help the library board understand how the system works. Rick's home library is East Fishkill. And the third Duchess County rep is from Beacon. The policy committee met. They are continuing to work on a variety of policies. They reviewed the mission statement and changing meeting attendance requirements to incorporate family leave. Discussion ensued about adding a total number of meetings required per year. The committee will review and return with revisions. A new sustainability policy and sustainable purchasing policy was approved. An ADA policy was discussed, though they did not put forth that policy just yet. And a public policy expression, sorry, yeah, no, public policy expression policy was approved. The Board Development Committee reviewed the onboarding for new board members, Buildings and Grounds Committee. The schedule for the Stucco and Porch Project remained to be going out for bid in March, which will be this month, with projects complete this summer. The facilities plan was mentioned that it needs updating, which the Buildings and Grounds Committee will tackle in the future. There's a strategic plan committee. Marta and Alex make up this committee and they're using the community needs assessment. The Community Center is also doing a strategic plan. They're looking to develop a survey and do one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders. Finance Treasurer's Report. The accountant is closing the books for 2023. So they did not have the normal reports for this particular meeting. The Mid-Hudson Library System report was due the next day. And that they are still transitioning from all cash basis to accrual basis. Mortgage payments have now been doubled. So budget versus actual report will be changing. There's some income that was not included in the budget. This would be the 2024 budget. The director reported on programming. He continues to adapt the report and comparisons to find the optimal reporting. Circulation, physical circulation was up 11% in January. And honestly, I don't remember whether that was versus the prior month or the prior year. Is that part of what's going back and forth and how, on how the director is reporting? But the physical circulation is sort of up and down. It's not consistently in one direction. The e-circulation was up 44%. E-circulation has been significantly up. Consistently up significantly. Alex discussed the wireless access information. The number of connections is going down. He's asking why people are using the library, who is and who isn't using the library and why. And if people are not using the computer desks, perhaps the space could be repurposed. Anna mentioned crossover programs bridging generations. Alex, this was a discussion around why people are using the library. Alex mentioned for community social cohesion, and there's more to discuss. The Naturalist in Residence Program, I assume, successfully launched this past Saturday, March 9th. The Vernal Equinox is March 19th. I believe there's a program surrounding that as well. Friends of the Library Group is being developed. It's in early stages, and that is being headed up by Sally McMelty. $13,300 was raised for the annual appeal, and some grants have been applied for. Discussion around applying for an increase in 259 funding, which is through the school. Discussion around how much they should ask for and still be under the cap. Tivoli is also apparently exploring an increase in 259 funding. Annual report due the day after this meeting. It was noted that the programming numbers are off by 1,000 versus prior year. And in the transition from Dawn to the accountant, the numbers don't match. They are looking to standardize definitions for better comparisons. Annual report was approved. The board election was tabled to next month. Believe it's the president that they have not yet elected. And their next meeting is March 21st, which is next Thursday. And all of their board documents, et cetera, are on the website and in my report. If you go to the library website, go under Board of Trustees. The link to the board packet is embedded in the text towards the bottom of the page. That's the library report.
Can I ask a question?
You may.
Did they talk at all about their lighting in the Buildings and Grounds Committee?
I believe it was mentioned that lighting and also the parking, possibly paving the parking, that that's part of the future facilities plan that they need to discuss in Buildings and Grounds.
Okay.
That was, I believe, the discussion around lighting was lighting the parking lot. But there wasn't anything specific about it.
Just that their lights are usually off. And now that they have some, they almost look like disc can lights that light straight up. They're illuminating different pathways at night. And I just don't, I don't know if that's some, yeah, something new or...
That did not come up, actually. I would assume that that's something new that they're trying to do in the, that's probably relatively easy to install versus something more permanent.
They don't totally, yeah, they don't totally look installed. They sort of look like they're solar things that shoot light straight up that are kind of like discs on the side of the... But I have noticed that their exterior lighting in the evening is not lit. So it's a little dark.
Yeah, that was not discussed at all. But I can certainly bring it up at the next meeting. Abraham's Park Task Force. Actually, I have printed up notes from minutes from all of our meetings since, I believe, our first meeting might have been in September. But I forgot to copy them and put them forth. So I will put them forth the next meeting. My apologies. But we have not had a meeting, and we did not have a meeting in the month of February. So we continue to work towards, one of the key starting pieces is the parking lot. And the parking lot, we're looking to do the parking lot off Linden Avenue, which is near Wetlands. And so that requires DEC involvement, which is, will take some effort. But I will have a better update at our next meeting. And that's all I, I don't think I have anything else to report. So with that, on to Deputy Mayor Karamo.
So Redhook Together meets the first Thursday of the month at alternate times and days and locations. Invitations and meeting times are coordinated by Bard CCE. And this meeting was not held. And there wasn't an email update on to why that was. But once I find that out, I'll update you guys. The Town of Redhook Economic Development Committee. The EDC holds public meetings on the 4th Wednesday of the month at 8:40 a.m. in the Redhook Village Hall courtroom. I attended the meeting on Valentine's Day. There was not a quorum present. Discussion ranged around Tivoli discussing short-term rentals, reaction from the public to housing projects, the town comprehensive plan process, and administrative limits to applying for grants. I was unable to attend March 20th's meeting. The next meeting will be this week on March 13th.
Well, wait, you meant February 28th?
Yes. No, no, wait, wait. No, this week, next meeting.
The one you were unable to attend?
You were unable to attend? Yes, you're right.
To March 28th?
Yes, thank you.
Let's not rush things faster than they're already going.
Okay, the Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 p.m. in the Village Hall conference room. March 6th meeting was spent reviewing signage at the main door of the Village Hall with Police Lieutenant Hildebrand and Sergeant Starrett. A temporary sign explaining how to reach the police even outside a Village Hall at office hours has been ordered to be mounted alongside the existing buzzer. Also, both English and Spanish versions of our new brochure explaining Village Services arrived from the printers this week.
Yeah, how dumb, this is, I only brought one Spanish, but here's, you can show that to Charlie.
If you haven't yet, please visit redhookvillage.org/notifyme to sign up for the Village notifications, as well as redhookvillage.org/newsletter to subscribe to the mayor's monthly newsletter.
Just to, yeah, just to back up, so this is the...
What?
There's a title.
Oh.
It says June instead of January. On Village Green meetings, it says June, April, July, October. It's supposed to be January.
Bummer. Good thing we didn't do a huge run. But yeah, please do take a look at that. It's sort of, it came out of our discussions in the municipal, the Language Access Grant. And we felt that if we were going to be speaking to the communities that where English isn't their native language, what would we tell them that we do? And so Mel Corbett did an amazing job of summarizing, as the front says, what does the village do for you? So it's also, it's in English and in Spanish. So aside from the Village Green meeting dates. If you see any other, we did have a lot of people look at this before it went to print. So if you see any issues or have any questions, know that we have a bunch if you want to hand some out. Our intention was to also provide them to real estate agents in the area, and the landlords, so that when they have new tenants or what have you, they can hand them out so that people have some, they understand how they connect with the village. I will say, the Village of Tivoli has had something similar to this. So now hopefully they're jealous of us instead of the other way around. But it's really a nice way to introduce people to the village and what village government does.
Quick comment?
Yeah.
I think it's awesome because people come in and they're very confused about what the village does versus what the town does. And I think that that pamphlet is going to be very, very helpful.
Thank you. And I did, we had, we had a representative from Congressman Ryan's office and a representative from State Senator Hinchy's office here on Friday. And the representative from Senator Hinchy's office is Spanish-speaking. So I had him look at the, and he said, he said they did a good job of translating. So I was glad to hear that. Anyway, I just want to sort of highlight this because it's very exciting to have it actually in print and to thank Mel Corbett for all the work that she did to summarize all that we do in a two-sided, three-fold brochure.
And hopefully we keep improving it with feedback. So thanks, Kim, for catching that.
Ah, and actually, it's going to go in the utility bills at the end of the month.
Okay, the Village Events Committee. The Village Events Committee meets the second Tuesday of each month at 6 p.m. at Village Hall. February's meeting discussion focused on different elements of Village Event Permit Must Address. We also discuss the timeline of adopting a village permit ahead of slated upcoming events. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, March 12th at 6 p.m. at the Village courtroom. And if you're interested in volunteering or joining the committee, please email events@redhooknyvillage.org. And just to clarify, the events permit, it has to be able to address every possible thing that could go wrong. And also can, we want to make sure and ensure that everything goes right. So that's, there's like a lot of little specific things that we're trying to work out to make sure it's not too much work for people. Okay. The Village of Redhook Human Relations Committee. The Human Relations Committee holds public meetings every first Thursday of the month at 7 p.m. in the Village Hall conference room. March's meeting was tentatively postponed to Wednesday, March 15th at 7 p.m. in the Village Hall conference room. Then Village of Redhook Highway Department. No all-night street parking is permitted in the village from November 1st through March 31st. Vehicles parked on the streets between 11 p.m. to 6 a.m. may be ticketed and towed at the owner's expense. Please note that the addition to the law regarding the village parking law, adopted by the Board in December 2023, has gone into effect. Overnight parking is still allowed, however, in the parking lot. However, in order to facilitate public parking being available to the general public, all long-term parking is prohibited. And parking is limited to 4 hours during the hours between 8 a.m. and 5 a.m. Streets sweeping will be taking place at the end of April or early May. It will be done before Apple Blossom Day, which will be held on May 11th. Streets striping will take place after street sweeping has commenced. Please sweep or rake sand and gravel from lawn edges onto the side of the street dispersed in a row, not in a large pile, to facilitate cleanup by the street sweeping machines. Residential recycling pickup. It has been recommended by highway personnel that weekly recycling should be placed loose, not bagged, within lidded containers. The lids help keep the recycling protected from precipitation and/or being blown out of containers by the wind. Please also tie together any cardboard into bundles. Village brush and yard and waste pickup will begin the week of April 8th. So please do not place out any piles until the month of March is over. Pickups will be scheduled for the first full week of every month, pending weather conditions to schedule it. Residents are reminded of the following rules. To place lawn debris and brush in separate piles. To place piles on the edge of your lawn, not on the sidewalk or the street. But tree stumps, branches larger than 6 inches in diameter, garbage or construction material will not be picked up. Piles should be limited to 6 by 6 by 6 feet. And consider combining smaller piles to neighbor to facilitate efficient pickups. Potholes. If you are concerned about a pothole on the village road, you can call the Village Clerk's Office to report it or use the report a concern form on the village website at redhookvillage.org/c concern. Please be aware that state highways are maintained by the New York State DOT and the village is not allowed to conduct repairs on a state highway. If a pothole appears on a state highway... If a pothole appears on a state highway, either Broadway or Market Street, you may still alert the village so that we can forward your concern to New York State DOT, or you can report a pothole directly to the New York State DOT by calling 1-800-POTHOLE. And streetlight complaints. If you notice a streetlight out, you may notify Central Hudson directly by going to centralhudson.com/EN/odages/streetlight-out and submitting the location of a lamp in their notification form. Street brining presentation. The Town of Red Hook's street brining presentation has been moved to April 9th, and there were no proceeds from the scrap metal program this last month.
But I'll note that the revenue already brought in from scrap metal is about $1,100 over what we budgeted, so it's all good. Thank you very much. Okay, on to Trustee Lang.
All righty. I'll start off with the Materials Management Report. Oh, and before I get into that, Jen, I did reach out to Jake because the numbers for the Welsh roll-off were a little funny, and what he sent back to me was entirely confusing, so I need to follow up with him. But it's not, it's not as large a volume as, as what we'd been led to believe.
Okay, great.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it was, it really made a huge difference in a weird way.
Yes, yes. So we'll go back into the, the report and rectify it once we actually have a clearer idea. I think I might need to get Jake to, at the end of each month, just tell us explicitly how many times they took the Welsh roll-off over there, and presuming that it was four at the time.
So is that currently reflected in the garbage line?
So we added the new line, the garbage roll-off line.
Oh, I see.
But that number in there is not correct, at least in the recent months, since the new garbage truck has been working.
Gotcha.
So we'll ignore that line for now. But for regular recycling and garbage in the month of February, we picked up 0.86 tons of commingled, 0.34 tons of cardboard, and 0.74 tons of paper for a total recycling of 1.94 tons. We don't know exactly what the garbage roll-off took away, but we will find out. And then total garbage that was picked up for the month of February was 6.99 tons. And so that's what we have for garbage and recycling. We sold $2,550 worth of garbage tags. And just for your awareness, the, the garbage costs $105 a ton, so together with a fuel surcharge and Welsh roll-off costs, the costs were about $1,000.
So just to clarify, so it looks like the amount of garbage significantly higher.
Yes.
You've got to roll off separately, so it went, so it was, it was 3.96 in February, and now it's 6.99? Or that's?
That's real. That, that 6.99 was the actual tonnage of, of garbage that was taken by the garbage truck last month. Yeah, it was a fairly high month.
Lot of garbage.
Yeah.
And less days in the month.
But that's, that's seven tons with the roll-off is not right.
Got it.
Yeah, to be continued.
Yeah. Measured in the actual garbage truck? Or it measures in the actual?
No, so the, the garbage that's taken with the truck is weighed at the facility.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I figured, yeah, yes.
And we get a report from the facility every month that says, okay, you dropped off this amount.
Thank you.
So we'll segue into the Village of Red Hook Water Treatment Facility's monthly report for the month of February. The water treatment facility treated 6,623,100 total gallons, which is an average of 224,900 gallons per day. And in my handy chart that I have in front of me, that's a little bit higher than this time last year, for whatever reason.
It's an extra day in the month?
Yes, yes, it's the leap year factor.
I mean, you know, daily use of 2.4 gallon, 2.5 gallons per day.
Thank you, Mayor. Clearly, that's part of it. And three bacteriological samples were collected from various parts of the system and sent off for analysis, and they all came back clean, no detectable coliform or E. coli bacteria.
I'd just interject, the, the numbers might be up because the skater system is out and the pumps, that we've been, I know Jake went to the water plant at one point and it was flooded, so.
Ooh, that's right. There was that incident last month where the tank was overflowing.
The computer system wasn't working and the tank was overflowing.
Yeah, and also the, I think the, the tower overflowed too, so.
Oh, we had a two-foot.
Yeah. Well, that's, it's got a computer problem.
Okay.
I only think the water tower overflow is a different problem than the other one. We're working on putting it on the list. That's why, that's why we've got, that's why we've got these WEA projects coming up.
Yeah. New skater, refresh tank, all, all good stuff. So just to finish that up, in the month of February, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, and the average daily use was 2.4 gallons per day. I also serve on the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, which did not meet last month, and the Sauk Hill Watershed Community, which did not meet last month, but we have a meeting scheduled for a week from tomorrow, which I plan to attend.
Is that a meeting at the Elm Dorf for public reading?
Sorry?
Is the Sauk Hill Watershed at the Elm Dorf for public reading?
I'm not sure at the time, at this time if it is at the Elm Dorf. I think it, no, it's a Zoom, it's a Zoom meeting. It's really, it's a, an organizational meeting to, to see about, you know, drumming up some, some further support and members and volunteers. So it's not, it's not a standard meeting, and we're really trying to sort of reorganize and reboot. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. On to Trustee Bradley Brecker.
Good evening. For the February report for the Village Green Committee, the current balances of the Village Green-related budget is, there were no charges for community beautification, no expenses in the shade tree contractual expenses, and as our lovely treasurer, Lori Urban, said earlier, the Village Green Committee checking account balance is $8,532.88, which is no change from last month. The Village Green Committee is working on diversifying our tree population here in the village and boosting our native tree species. This last month, five different tree species were selected out of the available list from the nursery for residents to plant in their right-of-ways, and the Village Green Committee is taking a new direction in tree plantings and are hoping that the attention to diversification and native species will allow for better selections and a clear idea to present to residents. We are also working on creating an informational postcard that you can scan if you choose to have a tree planted in your right-of-way or in your yard, of how to properly care for your tree. Ten trees were ordered just in time for the deadline by Chair Dave Pearson after the committee went out to canvass our residents. Residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted in, on their adjacent village street or New York State Highway right-of-ways, volunteering for planting days, or sponsoring a Village Green Committee beautification project, can talk to, can contact David Pearson, myself, or Jen Kavanaugh, the village clerk. And the Village Green has started to plan Springer, Spring Arbor Day celebration and tree planting. The planting will be held, held in early spring. The previous spring plantings have usually been early May. Meetings are open to the public, and we are actively seeking members of our community to join our committee. Our next scheduled meeting is the second Sunday of April, where we plan to plan further the planting day. For the Sewer Department, we're actively planning Phase Two of the sewer program and are eager to find the best solution for both use capacity, but also physical space and limitations of the actual landscape where the wastewater treatment plant is. The village engineer is working on compiling a report for potential build-out areas as we look to add more housing and protect our water supply. The old plant processed on average 14,000 gallons per day, and the new BK plant processed 37,000 gallons per day. All samples came back within range, and there are a few deficiencies noted, but at this point do not affect the overall well-being of the plants. As a reminder to all residents, whether you are in the sewer use area or not, be kind to your pipes, and please put only three peas in the toilet. And while in the kitchen or near other drains, no fats, oils, or grease, also known as fog, as they clog up the pipes and make the system stressed out. What goes down the drain matters. And if you are in the sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, call the Village Sewer Operator at 845-758-1081. Option A, press the silence alarm button only after notifying the sewer operator, otherwise we'll have no idea your alarm is going off. Please do not open the box or tamper with village-owned equipment. For the speed limit initiative in the month of February, there have been no updates other than quick meetings. Currently, currently working to compile the report. For the Town of Red Hook Greenland Trails Committee, the towns committee met on the second Thursday of February, and they discussed trail expansion of the Sauk Hill Trails with potential areas to move the trail to make a better and safer access on Aspen Mall, trying to avoid the curve and potential speeders. Additionally, in collaboration with Winnicly Land Trust, there was a volunteer day to extend and clear the Sauk Hill Trains where they met at the Red Park West. For Climate Smart Communities, Trustee Steve Abenzel and I met to discuss the plan for building the Climate Smart Task Force, and we will be putting together the task force in the next month. So if you are interested in participating in the village efforts for Climate Smart and clean energy programs, please don't hesitate to reach out to me through the village email. Furthermore, I met with trustee Vanessa Wertozy with Village of Ryanbuck's Climate Smart Community, and I'm looking forward to future collaboration with our neighbors. And there's a scheduled meeting early March with the representative at Corner Corroborative for the assessment kickoff, which actually happened last week. But that is it for my February reports.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Trustee Abenzel.
Okay, for the Village of Red Hook Building Department, in the month of February, there were four building permits issued, one certificate of occupancy was issued, and ten certificates of compliance. There were three municipal searches, and one order to remedy at 31 Frailie Street for a pod unit, which is pending. And there was a notice of violation at 33 Fisk Street that was remedied. There were no stop-warp orders, do not occupy notices or court appearances. Two complaints were logged in in the month, 33 Fisk Street. As mentioned above, there was a pod and dumpster work being carried out without a building permit, and that has since been remedied. And at 49 West Market Street, there was an illuminated sign, also remedied with a sign being removed. There were three fire inspections and one fire reinspection. The total fee revenue for all of that activity amounted to $1,700 for the month. There was no zoning board of appeals meeting because there was no agenda for the planning board. At the February 8th meeting, a site plan for 7385 South Broadway was tabled to the March 14th meeting, where a public hearing will be scheduled. A site plan for 59 Fisk Street also tabled to the March 14th meeting, and the public hearing was closed. A site plan for 7536 North Broadway was tabled to the March 14th meeting, and there will also be a public hearing for that. And a site plan for Firehouse Lane, the Inwood Foundation, was tabled to March 14th. So that looks like it's shaping up to be a full agenda for that meeting. For the Public Spaces Initiative, the update is as follows. There was a, well, meetings are held on the fourth Saturday of each month at 10:00 a.m. at Village Hall unless otherwise noted. This last meeting was held at the Community Center, which is the other location where meetings are held, and this was a continuation of the 2024 planning discussions that took place in the January meeting. And the primary focus was looking at building on successful activities and broadening outreach of the Public Spaces Initiative. And at the next meeting, a preliminary budget will be reviewed, and looking for ways to become more involved in local events to spread the word about PSI and include having presence on local events, such as the April 6th Repair Cafe at the Red Hook Community Center and Apple Blossom Day. Some event days have been kind of firmed up, pending final cross-check with the Village Events Committee. June 15th, the Hello Spring Event, and that's in conjunction with the Red Hook Community Center. And there was discussion of having that in other venues, but basically, that's kind of a kickoff with education components involving kids with fun activities, giving away plants, and having master gardeners where people can consult and learn about how to maximize the beauty and sustainability of their gardens. Other events include, you know, of course, Art Scrabble Day and the Pumpkins in the Park Event that premiered last year. October 19th is the date that's been identified for that. There may be other events which will take place with the Elm Dorf, where one of the pollinator gardens is located that the committee helped with, and also at a composting event at the recycling center. So going to the Pollinator Initiative, as mentioned at the last meeting, there's looking for alternative locations. KDA, which is a business next to the post office, has reached out for assistance as a private property. No funds will be expended, but the PSI may serve as kind of a subject matter expert to help guide them and making sure that the guidelines for pollinator gardens are, you know, made available and providing any advice based on previous gardens planted. Village Hall, the location is still to be determined, and looking at the front of the building is a tentative location for that. And for the Community Center, where there is an existing pollinator garden, plans revolve around maintenance of the current garden with possible expansion of the scope of where the area is. And the Red Hook Community Center has a new gardener, so the PSI team will work with that person to discuss how those plants are best maintained.
Steve, just, just to point out, for the discussion around the village pollinator garden, make sure that we stay in touch. We do, we did apply for a CDBG grant that included changing a variety of things in the front of Village Hall, so if, I, maybe I can ask the county executive next week, Friday? I think it's this week.
It's Thursday.
Thursday.
When, when they might announce those. Because if we do get it, then we have a plan for some changes. If we don't get it, I think we'll regroup and look to still make some changes, so.
You know, I know Ash.
Definitely plenty of opportunity.
Some of the young folks are, yeah, planning to do that, kind of waiting for that is one of the items on the program.
Super.
Pollinator pathways, looking to, you know, better syndicate information about that and getting ready on the website, as well as getting information about how people can self-register for pollinator gardens they might have on their private property. And there's been a lot of discussions with the library. They hired a naturalist for three months based on a grant, a woman named Susan Rogers, and Alex is proposing a field station next to the pond for nature engagement and wildlife viewing, so the, some of the folks from PSI have been involved with that and will continue outreach and communication with the library. There's also been outreach efforts to the school garden educators. Garden at Mill Road is the most active, and there's a less active garden at the high school, but they're talking about ways for future collaboration opportunities. And the last item which came up was just discussing having some educational components to the PSI meeting, and, you know, perhaps broadening the audience to be able to share information about some of the activities and threads of action that the PSI is involved with. So that wraps up the report for, for this one.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess the other, the zoning review committee, if we can. And I guess the other, the zoning review committee, if we can call it that, we are waiting for a response from the, our planning consultant. That's where we are on that piece.
Producing interim report, and we'll reach out to them to try and ascertain whether that plan is scheduled or followed.
Now's the moment for general business, any other general business from anybody?
Just two quick announcements. The Red Hook Community Center sent out an email today about their annual chili event on Friday, April 5th. You can register their website. It was a fun event last year, and the following day, as previously mentioned, the Repair Cafe at the Community Center will be on April 6th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. If anyone has any kind of repair skills they want to share, just let me know. Can connect everyone to volunteer, and if people have any broken but beloved items, they can bring it in that day.
Do you know, do you know if, if you've done a flyer yet for the Repair Cafe?
I do not know, but I will check.
Yes, do you have it?
I do not have it, but I know there's a draft voting.
Okay. Whenever there's a formal one, would you forward it to me? Because I'll put it in my newsletter.
And you can also.
Same for the chili event. Steve?
Oh.
E-Waste.
And E-Waste also on this thing. It's just going to be a day to do so many things, help make the earth a little bit of a better place.
There you go.
Take that.
Yeah, because I need a smart plan.
Do I have anything forwarded there in the email?
If I don't have it, I'll let you know. I should have it. Any other?
I gotta take out the E-Waste poster.
Yeah?
Is there a tree planting coming up?
Yeah, the tree planting is yet to be scheduled, but it most likely will be like the, around the first week of May. We're still waiting to hear back from the nursery. But last year it was, like April 22nd? April, I was out of state, so it was April 28th, I think, last year, April 22nd?
I think it was the 22nd.
22nd, yeah, I was in California. So end of April, early May, depending. We'll usually get notification about a week out from the nursery when they're going to be able to deliver. So if you're interested, let us know and then be on call and ready at the end of the month for some good old tree planting and Arbor Day celebrations.
Yes, I understand that because they send the trees with, it's just roots, they wait until it's prime moment, but you also need to plant it kind of right away. So that's why there isn't a date scheduled. I'd be willing to bet it's probably going to be, you know, the 27th seems logical.
Yeah, they send a spare root tree, so they can only be out of the ground for a couple of days.
Though, May 4th is I Love My Park Volunteer Day, so that, that could.
Hey, that could be a good day too.
And Earth Day is the 22nd, 8th, 22nd.
Yes, that's a Monday. Any other general business? Okay, any public comment? We'll take that as no. I have nothing for executive session today. I do need a motion to approve vouchers after review. So moved. Sounds like a move in a second, all in there? All in favor?
Aye.
And with nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome, thank you very much.
I just wanted to thank everybody unofficially for the, give you the proposal for the Pride Parade and accepting it.
Happy to do it. Yeah, it's been a great.